Good afternoon, everybody. Going to go ahead and call to order the Bristol-Virginia City Council for our called meeting for June 25th, 2020. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, thanks to everyone who was able to take some time out of their day to be here, and thanks to anyone who is taking time out of their day to watch at home. We only have one item on the agenda, which is a discussion item for how we want to proceed with some of these positions that were unfunded and how we're going to try and fund them in a supplemental appropriation for FY 2021. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over initially to the city manager to give some comments.
Counsel, on Tuesday night, there was a comment made at the meeting that stated that there was, had been an agreement to fund certain positions through unassigned fund balance, I take it. And based on those comments, one person made those comments, or may have been an agreement that was made, but I did not see a consensus in public as to how to move forward. I feel it's best that we talk about this situation so that everybody's on the same page moving forward to determine how we're going to fund these positions. As each of you all know, you all now have an adopted budget for the upcoming year. These positions are not included in the budget. So really, the question becomes today is, one, do you want to continue with the adopted budget as is with the positions eliminated, or do you want to find a way to add these positions in? So there's three ways to do that. One, you can do it through unassigned fund balance. Two, you could do it through an emergency reserve fund. Or three, you could do it through, pull it from the capital budget. So that's your all's discussion to have, and we'll be looking for consensus on how to move forward on July 1st.
All right. Thank you very much. I think one thing that we should probably address first before we even get into how we do this, to pull from the emergency fund, we need a supermajority. So we would need four votes to pull from the emergency fund. So I think the first thing that we should, see if that's even an option, is do we have, are there four members of this body that would be willing to vote to pull from the emergency fund? And I think that that's the first question, and I believe we can get a definition of what would constitute an emergency, should we, should we want to go down that route? Can we get a definition for what we would like to call an emergency?
Well, I really think what the question, before you even get to a definition of what an emergency is, are there four people today that's willing to pull from the emergency reserve fund? Because if there's not four people willing to pull from the emergency reserve fund, the discussion for a definition of an emergency can be held at a later date. However, I can tell you, there is a definition under Virginia law for an emergency under Title 44 hyphen 14616 that defines what an emergency is. Not only is it defined under the emergency services and disaster law provisions of the code, it's also defined in the anti-price gouging section of Title 56, I believe, of the other Virginia code as well, I'm sorry, Title 59.1. So we do have a definition of emergency according to state law, but the question is, right now, if you're pulling from the emergency reserve fund, are there four of you willing to do that before we narrow down our definition of an emergency?
So let's open that up first and see what our thoughts are on drawing from the emergency fund for this.
Well, I am a no vote.
Well, I think we at least need to have a conversation before we say we're a no vote. So I think it's inappropriate to say how many is for it until we have a conversation. So we're shutting down the conversation before we even have a discussion. I have a real problem with that. But if that's the way we want to run the council, that's fine.
Well, by all means.
I have legitimate questions. Here's any of them. You've started to answer some of them, so we need to have an open discussion about it.
By all means, then.
Okay. So first of all, we need to decide what the emergency fund and our financial policies really mean. What's the definition of that emergency? We need to be very clear about that. So we were operating under a state of emergency, a declared state of emergency. Now, does that meet the, does that meet the code that you mentioned, that we were operating under a declared state of emergency?
That's correct. We're operating under a state of emergency at this point. We're operating under, so under, under the definition of an emergency, per Virginia Code, an emergency means any occurrence or threat thereof, whether natural or manmade, which results or may result in substantial injury or harm to the population, or substantial damage to or loss of property or natural resources, and may involve governmental action beyond that authorized or contemplated by existing law, because governmental inaction for the period required to amend the law to meet the exigency would work immediate and irrevocable harm upon the citizens or the environment of the Commonwealth, or some clearly defined portion or portions thereof.
So if we back up, I think the key that I heard there was loss of property or natural resources.
I think it's loss of property and natural resources, and I think it also says that would require governmental action that is not currently contemplated by existing law, because governmental inaction during the period to amend the law to meet the emergency would work an immediate or irrevocable harm upon the citizens or the environment of the Commonwealth, or some clearly defined portion thereof.
So by that definition, would you, would you consider something that would qualify for pulling from the emergency fund a natural disaster? Is that what, is that what I'm hearing?
I'll leave you all up to determine whether or not that definition meets the emergency of, would meet an emergency within our financial policy.
So according to our policy, we have to have an emergency to pull from that fund.
Can I, can I interject just a second here? I'm going to read right from the policy, and, and one of the things that was debated as we identified funds to be set aside in a reserve account committed by council was what to call it. And during that debate, some wanted to call it a rainy day fund, some wanted to just call it, the finance committee never could narrow down a name. And the reason it got presented as emergency reserve fund is because of how the policy reads. But I don't think the intent was ever, the intent was, because nobody could settle on a name, we need to reserve these monies rather than while we continue to discuss a name. So certainly, if the name is open for change, is open for change per council's discretion. Let me read the policy. Amounts above the 18% policy goal could be used for the following purposes. One, fund additional reserves for use during an emergency, during periods of economic uncertainty or budget adversity, or for capital items. Such additional reserves shall be determined by city council. So when we talk about the emergency reserve fund, the name, in my opinion, just my opinion, is less important than the purpose. I hope that answered your question, Mr. Hartley.
Yeah, because, I mean, to me, that remembering all that discussion, I was the one, I think I said rainy day fund, because that's what most places have where they set money aside for unforeseen circumstances. And that tends to be what the policy says. It doesn't necessarily have to be a declared state of emergency meeting any of those guidelines. So it's just, that's, that's the name people decided, not rainy day fund, or reserve, or whatever you want. I mean, again, whatever you want to call it, but the intent is to have money there for unforeseen circumstances, capital needs, things that, that you wouldn't regularly budget for, that could come up from time to time.
So with what Mr. Hartley said and what you read, this, this situation clearly is within the definition of what's in the financial policy. So if you read that again, read it again.
Amounts above the 18% policy goal could be used for the following purposes. One, fund additional reserves for use during an emergency, during periods of economic uncertainty or budget adversity, or for capital items. Such additional reserves shall be determined by city council. I'm going to read the whole piece.
Which one, which, is that the fund balance policy?
I'm on the second page, Mr. Eads, right here, fund balance. Once funds are transferred into reserve accounts, they may only be transferred out for the stated purpose by majority vote of city council. The goal of this policy is to fund $5 million in this reserve. This policy was updated in January of 2020. Prior to that, it stated funds can only be moved out of there by a supermajority vote. That wording was changed this year. So when the 1.4 was committed, which is the formal action council takes, it was committed with, with the intention and direction and vote by council that it would only come out with a supermajority vote. So additional monies going in this reserve only require a majority, but the 1.4 does require a supermajority.
So you said two things there. One, for an emergency, it's authorized, and two, for unforeseen economic circumstances.
Uncertainty or budget adversity.
Right. Which we are clearly in that. This was unforeseen, this virus, the way it came out. Now, positions are at risk for no fault of their own. We have staff positions at risk of being cut because of the coronavirus, because revenues are down and we can't support those levels. So those funds clearly, in my opinion, apply to saving these positions for two reasons. It was a declared state of emergency, and then that state of emergency he read says, again, for some kind of personal citizen impact or something, I can't remember the words.
What it says, it would work an immediate and irrevocable harm upon the citizens or the environment.
Irrevocable harm to the citizens. So to lose your job, and to not have the funds to make your car payment, or your whatever, is irrevocable for that person. Now, what's right's right, what's wrong's wrong. So we have an emergency fund, it was set up for reasons of unforeseen things like this. These employees did not cause this, so we should discuss, are those funds appropriate, right, to try to salvage those positions? If not, I want to know what the emergency fund was set up for, because I was a no vote on the emergency fund. Because we had insurance policies that cover accidents and things that can happen, to protect buildings, and to protect cars and vehicles. So that wasn't in anything, so I was like, this 1.4 million to me doesn't make any sense. We've not had an emergency in the city for its history that could ever contemplate needing that kind of funds. So I voted no. So now we do have a state of emergency, we have funds there, and we're meeting the definitions, but now we don't want to use it for any reason, whether it's half of these positions is important, or one, or two, or all of them, right? That's what we're here to discuss, right? But the employees that are losing their positions, you may not think so, that's irrevocable harm, okay? And it's not right to let people go when things happen that's not under their control, when you may have the means, in the short term anyway, to salvage those positions, because some of these positions are important for where we are trying to do certain things, right? I mean, we've got public safety here, we've got all kinds of things, they're in different categories, right? But, and we could talk about each one of those. So that's why I want to have a discussion about that, right? Because if you don't have that discussion, then what you're saying is, we should have cut these positions a long time ago, they're not important to city services, and we're not going to fund them long term, because you're not even trying to make provisions for the short term that you have within your control. So I think they should, I think some of these should be discussed to be salvaged, based on some funds we have. And we could go down the list of every single one of these and talk about each one individually.
So I'll just say, you know, would this fit that definition? Yeah, I think so. Is this, there's other methods, I think, we could do as well, and, and there's other things to consider. So, you know, the goal of keeping these positions, I think, is what I want to see. Now, which is the best means to do it? Because if you take from the emergency fund, and then you have monies that would come somewhere else, and then roll over into your unassigned fund balance, then according to your policy, you'd want to commit them back to build your emergency fund backup. So if you could do that without tapping into your emergency fund, then, I mean, it's all going to roll back over eventually to the same place. So, you know, to me, the end, the outcome is more important than we try to keep these positions. I think there are different ways we can go about that, but I'm not necessarily opposed to using the emergency fund, but I'd like to discuss some of the other methods that may work, see if they work better.
And what are some of those other methods you're talking about?
Well, I mean, I think city manager had emailed us and mentioned, for example, and, and that's the thing too, is if we keep with our policies, and I had this discussion with the CFO and the city manager early on when we're trying to figure out ways to do this, is we need to keep one-time money with one-time expenses. So to do that, it's not what we're talking about here, funding these positions, we're talking about, the best way to do that and keep with our policies would be to cut our capital budget, because those funds are coming from recurring revenues, real estate tax, things that go into general fund, free that money up to fund whatever positions we want, and then take money from either, carry it forward from the end of the year, if that's a possibility. We do that all the time. If there's unspent money in a fund for one purpose, and at the end of the year, we just reallocate it, usually in July, not on the first, but we usually do that. So that's not unusual. Or if, if we don't take it from that, it would go into the unassigned fund balance, which hasn't, which is above what we need it, our policy says to be, so we haven't committed it to either a debt reserve or emergency reserve or anywhere else. So we could do that. We've done that on occasion. In fact, I think in February was one of the last times we committed funds that, from that unassigned fund balance. Or we could take from this, but according to our policy, then, those funds that, if there were excess funds in the capital budget, would, would roll over into unassigned fund balance. The policy says then, you know, you want to build up this reserve, so it would just go back to replenish it. So again, I don't know which way is cleaner and makes sense, but I think, you know, the one thing that you definitely want to do in, in all this, and I would agree with that, is, you know, to probably move money out of capital over so that whatever source of funding, whether it be money carried forward from this year, comes out of the unassigned fund balance, comes out of the emergency reserve, it's one-time money doing a one-time thing. That, that's, you know, that would probably be, it keeps us in line with our policies and be the best way to go with this.
So I have a question for the CFO. Speaking about the policies, so remind me again, we have 1.4 million in the emergency reserve fund. What does the policy state is the goal? It's 5 million?
Yes.
And so I came on to the finance committee last July when I became mayor, and these discussions on this policy were already well into it before I came on the finance committee, because it had already happened at that time.
Yes. I believe the policies were, January 2019 was the original, when the policies were approved by council, recommended by the city, by the finance committee and presented to council, and then they were updated. And our goal is to have policies before council for revision, or, or just reading if there's no revision annually.
And, and so, obviously, I was not on the finance committee at that time. It was Mr. Hartley, Mr. Mumpower, but those, those policies were well-defined and clear, and clearly stated at that point, that we have a goal to set $5 million into the emergency fund.
Originally, there was not a dollar amount. Mr. Hartley, correct me, and Mr. Mumpower, correct me if I'm wrong, there was not a dollar amount, it was a percentage. And because our general fund budget moves, this year, the decision was made to actually name a dollar amount of the 5 million.
Yeah. I mean, I think the goal originally was to build up the unassigned fund balance to a level to keep us off the tan, and I think it started at 15%. We even went up to 18. And, you know, then beyond that, any excess monies, you would, you could, you don't have to, but you could commit to either a debt reserve, which would allow us to deal with our increasing debt load over the next few years and be able to, to get over that hump, and/or to set money aside for, for these unforeseen contingencies, rainy day, emergency, whatever you want to call it, was the next thing, because the thought there clearly is, we don't have a borrowing capacity. So whereas other municipalities, if, and, and I don't think anybody thought of, of a situation like this, and, but say, a big piece of equipment was to go down, most places would then go out and borrow the money to get, say, a multimillion dollar piece of equipment. We wouldn't have that capacity, so we needed to set money aside just in case something like that might happen. I think that was more what was on people's minds than this, but again, you, you have unforeseen circumstances.
And just like to add one more thing, also, improving the city's credit rating was a part of that discussion, because the unassigned fund balance goal is, what do you need to have in unassigned fund balance to keep you, as Mr. Hartley said, from having to use the tan to operate annually? So beyond that, what else increases or could lead to an upgrade in your credit rating, which enhances the financial position of the city? That was part of the discussion.
So what's the current dollar amount in the unassigned fund balance?
Can I pull that up just a second? We're at 23% right now. Let me give you that dollar amount. So in the unassigned fund balance, it's about 13.3 million?
13.3 million. And to be within the 18% policy at the budget level, that would be right at 10 million. Correct. 18% of 52 million.
It's about, it's about 10 and a half percent, Mr. Mumpower, and I think there's about 3 million, there's about 3 million, I'm sorry.
You mean 10 and a half million?
What did I say?
10 and a half percent.
Yes. There's about 3 million in excess, and that information was presented to council. Do you all remember that discussion? I can't remember what month that was, Mr. Eads.
May I believe.
February?
Yeah, that's right, February.
And, and that doesn't include the amounts we committed Tuesday night? Because it, or would it have been in the?
No, Tuesday night's $1 million was out of 1920 budget. This was fiscal year 19, unassigned fund balance per the audit results.
Okay. And what was the capital dollar amount that we were talking about here that would have to be transferred if, if that was considered? How many, how many dollars is that?
Well, it depends on how you all would want to transfer and the positions that you would want to consider. I've given you all an updated spreadsheet in front of you that, as far as the positions go, that I think would be best suited for general fund monies. You're looking at a purchasing position, Parks and Rec Senior Center Supervisor, Parks and Rec Supervisor, Code Compliance and Economic Development. The CARES Act funding could cover the firefighter and police officer. If you're funding the positions for six months, which I think was the original intent as we were going into this budget, is that we would know whether or not revenues were coming back online by late fall, early to late fall, and then we could start funding the positions that had been eliminated and get some of those positions back. So if you want to fund this through December 30th or December 31st, the total that would be required would be $162,372.50, that's fully loaded between now and December. Then the question is going to become, if revenues do not come back online, how do we continue to fund it, or do we eliminate the positions once again? And that's, that's not an answer that any of us have right now, because we do not know what's going to happen.
So worst case, six months is around $215,000, $216,000, right? If you did all of these, both categories, that's worst case.
If you don't use, if you use strictly general fund money, that's right. If you use the CARES Act funding for police and fire, $54,839 is CARES Act funds, and $162,372.50 would be general fund money.
What do, what did the chiefs, Austin and Armstrong, think about those positions in their departments with CARES Act money? Because I know the job duties would be different.
They're working on, they are working on those job descriptions right now so that they will comply with CARES Act funding.
Okay.
And I'll just say this, once we receive those job descriptions, they may or may not meet the requirements of the CARES Act, and we would have to look at whether to eliminate that position or do something different. But at this point, we feel like that they can meet a definition.
Well, and I'll just say, I think there's another source, if we, if we wanted to, we've got a six-month position for Community and Economic Development Director that start, that doesn't, isn't anticipated to start until the second half of the year. So you could just take those funds and move them to cover some of these positions as well, and then, because if the idea is, we're going to wait six months and see where we are, if we're, you know, we may need that to fund these positions, or, you know, we could use that, and then that would minimize the amount that you would have to transfer over, probably get it closer to 100,000.
The amount that we could use from the community development position is 54,797, so you would back that off the 162, that puts you about $108,000 that would need to be transferred from either the unassigned fund balance, the emergency reserve account, or the capital account.
So I didn't quite understand what Mr. Hartley was saying there about the position of the economic development being gapped until the end of the year. Can you explain that a little bit?
Well, at, in the budget, we discussed this in two-on-twos, the community development position was going to be left unfilled until January, simply because we did not know where the virus was going to take us, and we felt that since it had been vacant, there was no reason to fund that position in a time of uncertainty. Our goal would have been to hire that person sometime in December so that they could start in January. So at this point, what you could do is take those funds that are basically reserved for the second half of the year, apply them to the positions that I have enunciated that would be used for general fund, would be funded with general fund money. And that covers those first six months. If revenues come back online, then you fund the community development position with those revenues as they're coming back online.
So really, we'd be looking, instead of 162, we'd be looking about 108 that we would need to fund for six months.
That's correct. Now, make no mistake, gentlemen, at the end of the day, if we're back on lockdown and things go south, we're going to be having a discussion in late December or November of how we're moving forward. And there comes a point when you've got to cut bait. And these are not easy decisions to make, they're not fun decisions to make, and let me tell you, I lost plenty of sleep over trying to figure out the positions that needed to stay and the positions that we could just operate with. And depending on what happens in the economy over the next six months is going to determine whether or not we're having some serious conversations about staffing levels in the city coming 1 January.
I agree with you, and, you know, things could turn south, and we could be having these bad discussions later. But, but I think part of it, as some people alluded to, you know, we have to provide some kind of hope for these employees. You know, they've, they've committed a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of energy to our city. And, you know, if, if we can fund them for six more months, they've got six more months of, of money coming in, you know, we need to do it, you know? And we need these positions anyway, as, as we've discussed, these are, these are vital to a lot of the operation of the city. So that may be a discussion we'll have to have in November, December, but in the meantime, I think it's a I think it's important that we give these people the ability to keep working.
No, yeah, I mean, I, I think you've stated that from the minute you presented the budget, that this is all tentative, you're, you're doing, and I appreciate the work that both you and Ms. Bradlin have done. I mean, because you had one budget, you had to turn, and, and things were on lockdown. Now things are easing up some, but we don't know what the effect of that is. We don't know how long, if that'll last. So this buys us a little time, and it does, you know, for, for the employees, I know it matters. It's, it's, you don't want to be out of work. It's not a position anybody wants to be in. But more importantly, it keeps, these are functions that, that the city needs, I think, and, you know, will help not only keep the level of services, but help us, if, as things rebound, and hopefully they will, you know, things like the economic development and code compliance. I mean, if, if you don't have people dealing with the codes and stuff and economic development, it's going to get hard to get people to invest in the city. And more so, if you were to say, well, we could cut these and then wait six months to see if we should bring them back, then, you know, there's no, in that six months, those people may try to find another job. You'd have to go through the process of rehiring people, probably. I don't know. So, you know, you're adding a bunch of stuff, and these are things that need to be done for the city. So I think, you know, if we can keep them now, that's, that's good. But you're absolutely right that, that we need to keep an eye on this, and depending how things go, we could be here, you know, four or five months from now having these same discussions. It's just, we don't know where it's at. I guess my question is, if you move this, the, took the economic development and then the capital, ask Ms. Bradlin, do you anticipate that there'll be carryover, I mean, unused money in the capital budget that we, that we could carry forward? So that basically, I don't know what, like, a couple of the police cars, you could just delay that purchase until you knew, till the money, you know, you closed out the year, and then you could carry money from last year's capital budget that wasn't used over, we could reallocate it?
Yes, sir. I do anticipate that.
I mean, I know you probably don't know the, but do you think this would fall in that amount? I mean, it's not.
I do.
Okay.
Well, you know, if you say, if you say that, it might be best if we were to utilize the money from the capital project fund, because then we would still have a balanced budget. We'd have a structurally balanced budget when we do this. Instead of having to pull from emergency fund or unassigned fund balance or anything, if we use the capital fund, we could still have a structurally balanced budget, which I think is, is important.
It's very important. I mean, that's one of the things that the credit rating agencies and everybody looks at, and for a long time, the city didn't do that. So, you know, and like I say, if we take that economic development, that even minimizes just the amount of the carry forward. So we're trying to keep, keep that at a minimum.
Can I correct that we cannot say anything to the audience of the calling?
In this case, yes, you are correct.
I'm sorry?
You're correct.
I'm just sitting here to explain why I'm not being able to.
Thank you.
So clearly, we have funds. It's a matter of how we use the funds. And so when I looked at this list, one of the problems I had is we, we've never developed a contingency plan as a city. When something like this happens, when an economic downturn occurs, you should have a, a plan already in place so you know what positions are first on the list, second on the list, that you have to eliminate based on operational execution, you know, what you have to do to keep services moving. And so when this list got put together in the budget, I had lots of questions about why certain positions were on here and why certain positions weren't on here. And, and I still am not comfortable with the list, right? So when I see things like a purchasing person on there, well, that's an absolutely critical financial function in any organization, to have somebody that oversees the quotation and the negotiation of how we buy material with our cost situation. That's an important position, and it's on here. You know, so when you go down here, there's, there's a discussion on every one of these, right? Why? Police, okay, we know that one, security. You don't want to cut the police and jeopardize city security, especially in the state, the condition we're in in the country right now, right? In fact, we probably should have more security, right? And then if you're moving over to the CARES Act, we're waiting on the police chief to say, well, what are they going to do with those duties? And how does that handicap that person from doing what they would normally do as a police officer? So we potentially could be pulling one police officer off of normal, you know, normal kind of city security to do just COVID-19 stuff, because you can't do anything else to, to comply. And then we've maybe put ourselves in a worse situation on security. So I'm not comfortable yet that I understand those dynamics, right?
So, I was just going to say, both, both of those positions right now, correct, the list you gave earlier are, are currently vacant.
That's correct.
So it's, you know, it would be leaving those positions there and filling with somebody. So it wouldn't be taking somebody, you know, in the case of the police that's currently on the road and reassigning them. You would go ahead and fill this vacant position. They could do this with the CARES Act with the hope then that the revenues come back and, and at the end of this, they could transition over to be a patrol officer. And with purchasing, you know, it's, it's currently vacant, and somebody else would have to fill those duties, which would double up the work that somebody else is doing. So, and I agree, it's, it's an important position, but in, in the list I had anyway, that those were already vacant, so it's not.
Okay, so let me make myself clear. To me, it doesn't matter if it's vacant or if it's filled. The question is whether it's critical or not to the operation. So if it's vacant, we should have already filled it, right? We should have already filled it prior to this discussion if it was vacant for several months. And I'm assuming it was vacant for a while.
It became vacant on March 13th due to retirement. And I want to comment, to say that we didn't have a plan in place in regards to positions that were critical is incorrect. We had a plan in place, and here's what I will say, I will go down by each department. The city presumably needs a city manager. Maybe some of y'all don't think that's necessary. Maybe it is, I don't know. You need a city attorney, you need a CFO, you need your department, you need your individual people within the financial department to operate the city because bills still have to be paid, employees still have to be paid, you still have to have HR because you still have employees, you still have to have fire and police because those are safety positions, you still have to have public works because we still have to carry on the business of the people to make sure roads are upkept, to make sure that all the services that public works provides are done. You still have to have your solid waste division, that's your collections and landfill. So when you get down to what is essential and nonessential, there are not that many nonessential positions in this city. Your Clear Creek Golf Course, I could have shut Clear Creek down, but I will tell you exactly what would have happened. You would have then had a cow pasture because you would not have had anybody out there taking care of that golf course on a daily basis that's needed. I can also tell you that each five of you would have gotten phone calls from several golfers wondering why we shut Clear Creek down because it was the only place that they could go out and recreate during a time of lockdown. You could have shut down the entire Parks and Rec Department, which we basically did because during a time period, there was not a time for people that could actually get together and operate. I asked this city council for a furlough policy that would have saved us money for a period of time. It was tabled, probably because of an election. I could have saved the city money, we could have brought these people back when it was appropriate time to do so. I don't know if we'll ever have a furlough policy. So to think that there are not, that there, that positions in the city are nonessential, there are very few. We exhaustively covered each position with department heads and with HR to determine what was essential and nonessential. And I would say we spent weeks trying to figure out what was the least impact to the citizens of this city to carry on the services that we're supposed to carry on. Based on these positions that you see in front of you right now, purchasing was vacant, sure, it required some work on the part of Ms. Bradlin, but it's something that we can do for a short period of time. Parks and Rec Senior Center, Parks and Rec Supervisor, the goal that is stated in the reopening of Virginia is that the vulnerable population should remain at home. So my question was, why do you have the senior center open when the goal is they should stay at home and stay socially distanced from one another? The Parks and Rec Supervisor, why do you have that position when there are children and parents congregating on ball fields when they should not be congregating? And when it was time to reopen those facilities, we would bring that position back as revenues come back online. Code compliance would have been the biggest headache I could have ever dealt with, I can promise you that, because we would have had everybody coming in here every other Tuesday night fussing about someone's grass, fussing about some car, fussing about something. But code compliance is critical. But what I was going to do, the plan was a home, our home inspector would then cover part of that position. Would it have been efficient? Was it the best thing to potentially do? Yes, because that code, code compliance officer would not have lost his job, he could have moved back to public works, and the way we have this budget set up, they will be working on V-day, VDOT maintenance projects 80% of the time that will be covered through state monies. Economic development, I had the biggest heartache over this one because why in the world would I cut, cut out economic development during a time of a pandemic and economic uncertainty? I'll tell you why. Because businesses were not doing anything, and the purpose of economic development is for the economic development person to be recruiting businesses and retaining businesses in Bristol. But with businesses closed, is there a way that that could have been handled for a short period of time? And the way to have handled that for that short period of time was through CARES Act money. As we get further into the processes of CARES Act money, we understand now that economic development is probably not suited to be funded through CARES Act money. It's better to be funded through general fund money. And I would suggest if any council member ever had a question about these, they should have asked me before June 25th at noon why we did certain things. There's been plenty of opportunities. May 12th, May 26th, June 9th, June 23rd, and the two-on-twos we've had, and my phone is on 24/7. So pick it up.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would agree with you. We have had ample opportunity to discuss this, and I know that, you know, as far as what positions are essential or critical, this, we've all read this budget, we've all been on here since at least 2018 and some of us before that, there's not a lot of fat in this budget. You can disagree if you want, but it was before, before me or Mr. Farham got on here, it was cut a lot. There's, there's not a lot of pork in this budget. So none of these jobs are, are fluff. None of them, they all perform a critical role. So, you know, we have had a lot of time to discuss this, so I'm not sure, you know, why we are having this discussion on June 25th when we've had the opportunity, as you've said, in two-on-twos and all kinds of meetings. And I know at any point, if I call you, I can come down here and talk to you if I need to about, about anything in this budget.
Well, and I would also say, offer suggestions. If you don't like it, offer suggestions. If this list is wrong, tell me what's right. I haven't heard that.
All right, I've sat here and I've listened to everybody. I was a no straight out the gate, taking it from the emergency fund, because the real emergency and the real crisis is the fact that we have businesses shutting down and people moving out of our city. It is stated in the finance, in our books this year, 16,482 residents. Last year, it was still over 17, I think it was 17,4. So that's 1,000 additional people. Our trends have not changed. The crisis is the city is shrinking and not growing. And at some point in time, whether it's today, tomorrow, next week, a year from now, whenever the, whenever it is, if we do not grow this city, there is no way that you can sit here and justify having the staffing at the levels that we have them. The crisis is, we have got to position ourselves to look out at these 16,482 people and figure out a way to retain them and keep growing. We are one of the highest taxed cities around this area here. When is this city going to start thinking about the 16,482 people, giving them some tax breaks, some tax reliefs, and getting the environment in this city back to a positive environment that would encourage people to move back over here, stay here, not move away? Businesses come in and open up. It only stands to reason that if you are losing revenues, you cannot maintain the current staffing. At some point, the adjustment has to be made. You can prolong it for six months, but at doing that, you are asking the 16,482 people out there to keep maintaining government at its current level. So you step up out there and you suck it up, we're going to take the money from you because we don't want nothing to be changed and altered inside government. The crisis is not right here for this city. This is a crisis for these people, these names on this list and their families, and it is happening all throughout this country. It is a part of life. Does anybody want to see these positions go? No. But what is reality? At some point in time, everybody sitting in this room has to look at their budget at home, and they have to make operations to it. In good times, everything's fine. In bad times, you start looking at what you can start cutting and doing away with and still be able to live and maintain. I don't want to see these jobs go away, but I don't want to see these 16,482 people paying more money than they're supposed to be paying because government is unwilling to do what it knows it has to do or should do. It's not right, it's not fair, and the crisis is in this city dwindling. People are moving, and you all know it. Now, when are we going to start thinking about the city taxpayers and what we can do for them? Yeah, they want fire, they want police, but at what level? We had a study done a few years back that just was a nightmare, but it showed us a lot of facts, and you cannot close your eyes to those facts.
Mr. Wingard, I would like for you to go out and talk to people and ask if anybody, excuse me, ask if anybody wants to fire some firefighters. I guarantee you, you might find maybe one person out of 16,000-some that's going to say, yeah, cut me some firefighters. I don't see that happening. We, these, you know, we want the police, we want the fire, we need the code compliance, we need all these jobs. And as far as, you know, the discussion of growing the city, that's a larger discussion for another day, but I mean, we were in a meeting last night where we spent multiple hours talking about how to increase our tax revenue. You know, we, we have covered it in depth, we've got the casino, in my mind, coming, and that'll be a place to grow the tax revenue. But it's, it's not, it's not a great thing to be talking about, let's fire a whole bunch of people, let's cut the taxes, because you're going to see people get mad if they don't have these city services that they expect. You live in a city, you expect services you would not get in the county. So they expect a fully funded professional fire department, they expect a fully funded and staffed police department, they expect code compliance, they expect Parks and Rec, they expect these things. This is, this is part of living in a city. Do I, hold on. Do I, do I agree with you that taxes are too high? Yes. Do I agree with you that it's time to cut them right now? No, I don't. That's irresponsible for us to further cut one of our major revenue sources.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, you have to have your numbers in line.
And so how do we keep them?
You cannot keep shrinking as a community and maintain your current staffing levels. It's too stressful, it's too tax stressful on our community. It's too stressful, it's too tax stressful on our community, in our community. They're paying thirty-three dollars a month for garbage removal. A dollar seventeen per hundred on their taxes. Between their personal property taxes, their real estate taxes, the garbage fees that they're paying, it's too much.
I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you.
And when are we going to have the discussion to try to bring all that back in line? We're not going to ever have that discussion until we can figure out what is the correct level of our employees inside this city. Mr. Eads is our city manager, and our CFO worked diligently on this budget. They have made their recommendations. There has never been a perfect budget, and there never will be a perfect budget. But these positions, our CFO and our city manager, have done their job, and they have made their recommendations, and they have presented us a balanced budget with the least amount of impact on this city. And now this council is sitting here calling their judgments into whatever, questioning, and that's all fine and dandy. But nobody in this five right here knows this city better than these two. And they talked to their department heads. They have came up with reasonable conclusions that these positions can be eliminated and this city fully function without any great degree of difficulty. Because if they felt like it would have been, they would have never presented it. And now we are sitting and we are questioning our city upper level management.
You know, they presented it and we did pass it, as you recall, two days ago. Back to your point on taxes. So if we cut from one-seventeen just to one-oh-eight, I remember this discussion last month, that would be almost a million dollars in less revenue if we did that right now. I agree with you again that taxes are too high, but where are you gonna cut another million dollars out of this budget? I'm assuming you've read the whole thing like I have, so where would you cut another million dollars from it?
Okay, I'm gonna tell you where you start. You start with the CFO and the city manager's recommendation. There's three hundred thousand dollars. There's actually four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Am I correct on that?
Four thirty-three.
Four thirty-three. This is where you start, gentlemen, with the recommendations of the leadership that you have put in place.
You realize these cuts are not, this is not cuts structurally for the future. These were cuts that were proposed because of a loss in tax revenue. I don't think anybody in this room expects us to go forever without a code compliance or without a Parks and Rec supervisor or whatever. These were not, this is not cut the taxes a million dollars and then never have these jobs again. And as far as the public safety ones, you know, they're coming from CARESAC, but it would hurt to cut these. It would hurt to cut these. We know that they need more police and they need more firefighters. That's been discussed.
And now you're talking about cutting capital. It was brought up, cut capital. So let's have more firefighters, let's have more police, but let's don't order their cars, let's get them just out here walking the beat. And the firefighters, you know, let them carry the water in a bucket. You've got to keep your capital in place because that's part of what got us in the situation that we're in. We don't need to be messing with our capital.
And we're not. What we're saying is, if you fund these positions, where does that go? You don't fund, and again, it keeps us more in line with our policies. These are funded out of the general fund with, it's reoccurring expense, you're using reoccurring funds. Capital is by its nature a one-time expense, you only buy a police car once. So you're carrying forward money, making an additional appropriation out of funds that you didn't spend this year, carrying it forward one time to spend on a one-time thing. And, you know, I find it interesting, you're sitting here talking about we should follow the city manager and CFO's recommendation every year they bring us a budget. You know, the last two or three years, we haven't followed. There's been things that have been cut out of their budget, that they said, no, we need this expense, and the councils went and cut. Some of those I agreed with, some I didn't agree with. So to sit here now and say, you know, well, we should do what they said, we, I mean, they make a recommendation. It's up to us. And I mean, to sit here though and say, we should be doing exactly what they say, when for the last three years, you know, I mean, there's been things cut out that you proposed that they said, no, that, and their budget was there, and you said, no, we don't need that. And then that, I mean, that's the whole point. They make a recommendation based on what they can. These positions, they looked at it as best as they can and said, to make the budget balance, this is what we have to do. As Mr. Eads just said, you know, yeah, you could do without code compliance. I mean, they had a plan that this was, you know, but I don't think it's long-term that they were just gonna eliminate code compliance or economic development. And the ones they eliminated, they really thought through and tried to do the least amount of damage. And that's what this is to, you know, now, like I say, when they did this, everything was completely locked down. Now things are coming back, so we don't know where that's gonna fall out. So to keep these there and give us a little extra time, we may have to come back. I hope we don't, but we just don't know where that's at. And I think if you lose these positions now, it's any time we've ever lost any. Look at the city attorney position. You were, y'all were in favor of cutting that. I didn't think it should be cut. And now we need to get it back. Everybody says, where does that money come from? Once you cut something, it gets extremely hard to put something back in. And so, and not only that, but with these personnel, and some of these are vacant, but the ones where the people are here, if you cut that six months from now, I mean, do you think they're just gonna sit at home for six months and wait to get called back? No, they're gonna, you know, right now, do their press to try to find a job. So you may not be able to find that, bring that person back, or even find a qualified person. It may take nine months or twelve months just to find a person. So if these people are here, keep them in their job because they're performing a service for the city that we need to have.
So let's kind of hone it back in, because I know people have places they gotta be. I'll give you my position on this. You know, I originally was, I originally was in favor of pulling from the unassigned fund balance to cover these jobs. You know, and whether or not you have a disagreement on whether they should be covered or not, that's one thing. But as far as how we would cover them, I wanted to pull from the unassigned fund balance. But after I've done a lot of reading through this budget and talking to the city manager and the CFO, in order to maintain a structurally balanced budget, I think the road we need to take is, you know, I don't like it because we do need to buy new police cars, is to dip into the capital funds project and move it, because it'll keep our budget balanced. So I mean, if that's, that's the position I'm gonna stake out, and that's what I would like to see, and I'd like to hear everybody else's thoughts.
Speak on Mr. Hartley's comments there, and I agree with a lot of what you said. But what we're not taking into consideration is, the previous budgets prior to this year was under normal circumstances. The economy was good. We could actually see a roadmap and set projections and have a basis to build our train of thought with. This year's budget is with a world crisis. And I'm telling you, nobody knows the departments and the operation of the city better than the city manager and our CFO. And we would be wise to take their recommendations this year and be done with it and see where we end up six months, twelve months from now. Do we have the economy back? Is everything opened back up? This is a recommended budget, in my opinion, that is very, very strong. And we should be very grateful that it's not any more devastating than what it was presented to us in. We don't know the operations of this city. We don't know it. They work it every day, they talk to their department heads. This is trying times for everybody. And we have to be real. We are not in a position to wish and want and have pipe dreams.
I don't believe that filling these jobs are pipe dreams or wishes or wants. You know, and the last thing I'll say on this, you know, I agree that we need to take the experts' advice, you know, from the city manager and the CFO. But it was just a little bit over a year ago that their advice was for us to raise the trash rates, and you thought it was the dumbest thing you'd ever heard. So, you know, you can't be selective if you're gonna take their advice. But, you know, in this case, I've heard the advice. I know in my heart that I think we need to fill these jobs, and as how we're gonna do it, I think that the capital fund is the best way to do it.
I want to let everyone know that I think Mr. Mumpower has a hard stop at one-fifteen, and, you know, to be fair to employees, I need to either notify them they've got a job on July one or they don't. So, and we have to have an agenda set for the supplemental appropriation by this afternoon so we can get that posted.
Like I say, I think if you could take the funds for the Community and Economic Development Director and reduce the capital, I guess temporarily, and wait to see, because it's anticipated we'll have funds unexpended from this year that we can carry forward once we know what, exactly what that amount is. So that's really just delaying purchasing, you know, a vehicle or two for a couple of months that if we fund these for six months, and then see where we're at. I mean, we don't know where we're at, but that would be the direction I'd be comfortable with.
Would you say do it for six months? If we fund these positions for six months, and then in December, we're reassessing, and we're looking and seeing where our revenues are at. If revenues are great, the economy's coming back strong, great. Then they're funded for the additional six months through the year, then they're built back into the budget next year. If we're on lockdown, if the economy's terrible in six months, you know, we reassess. But, and just kind of a big picture question to Ms. Bradlin. If, I mean, in a way, depending on if the funds come from the unassigned fund balance, the reserve account, the emergency reserve account, or the capital account, we're basically, we're still using funds, no matter where they're coming from, it's all, it's city money, it's just kind of depending on where we pull it from. And, you know, I don't disagree that if we pulled it from the emergency fund, you know, if this doesn't constitute an emergency, what does, is my question. But so I would be fine with that if there are four votes to do that. But if we did it from the capital account and we maintained that structural balance that we need, if it helped our, helped the way we appear to credit agencies, I'd be okay with that too.
Did you ask me a question? I'm sorry, Mr. Farnham.
Accounting-wise, if funding were to come from the capital account, just the unassigned fund balance in general, or the emergency reserve, does it make a difference? Is one easier than the other?
One of the things we've talked about is our fund balance policy. The budget that the city manager recommended actually was prepared off of our budget policy as well. And our budget policy clearly states that recurring expenditures are funded with recurring revenue. So in keeping in line with that policy, then, items like salaries and benefits which are recurring would be funded with recurring revenues, not pulling from beginning balances. And I understand, we're in a different circumstance right now, but that was what this budget was developed under that policy. So there is a difference. It's an accounting difference, a financial policy difference as to what pays for recurring expenditures. Did that answer your question?
It does. And just real quick, earlier we mentioned the two positions for the CARESAC money, and the police officer position was vacant. I was thinking the firefighter position was currently filled.
It's currently filled, that's correct.
Okay.
So what you're basically saying, you shouldn't be pulling money from these funds because your salaries are recurring expenses, and that should be funded by recurring revenues at the top line.
That's what our budget policy states.
So if we vote that way and try to move capital money over, or emergency fund, or unassigned, any of those funds, we'd be violating our policy.
The capital is not, the capital items are not recurring. Salaries and benefits are. Capital items are defined, they're known as non-recurring. That is the difference there. Salaries and benefits.
So salaries are recurring because they occur every month, right, just like the light bill. Capital does not occur every month, right? You buy it once every two years, once every five, it's not an annual recurring expense. So you're saying to fund a recurring expense, which is salaries, it has to come based on policy from the recurring revenues, which is the tax line level. So you can't take it out of capital, and you can't take it out of unassigned, and you can't take it out of emergency without violating the policy.
I think the discussion, Mr. Eads, you come on to a discussion that's been, maybe reduce the transfer to the capital fund, and that be considered, I'll say despite, that be considered non-recurring, and I answered it there, it is.
Okay, you have to explain, it doesn't make any sense to me. It's either recurring or it's not.
Well, I think I'm trying to.
You can't play a movement of funds and then call it unrecurring back to occurring.
No, no, a line item in the general fund budget is transfer, transfer to the capital fund, Fund Nine.
Which is funded by recurring revenue funds, the local.
The transfer.
So you're saying the exception financing, per GAAP.
Actually, what we try, that's not per GAAP. What we try and do is, actually, we try and fund the bulk of the transfer to capital from, not from our tax revenues, but from other items. We've had to try and build it up over time by adding some additional items in. But what we tried to build that capital up with, which was actually a council directive to build that up, was as our lease payments pay off, we use that to buy new stuff. Our sale of equipment, we use that to buy new stuff. Any sale of land, which has been down somewhat, but we use that to buy new capital, I should say capital instead of stuff, sorry. But that is different than our tax revenue.
Okay, so in the interest of time, here's what I've heard. I've heard that two have mentioned, three have mentioned pull from the capital, with one of those three saying, pull funds from the, or transfer funds from community development over to economic development to reduce that capital transfer. Mr. Wingard says leave the budget alone, it's passed, and then we haven't heard from Mr. Mumpower.
I'm a no vote on the current budget. I say leave it alone, so it's irrelevant to me, so I'm a no vote, no matter what you do.
All right. That's all we needed.
So will this be on the agenda for the July first, or will we have a separate meeting?
You'll have a separate meeting immediately following the organizational meeting.
All right, very good. Is there anything else? If not, we stand adjourned.